We are going to call this meeting of City Council to order. I would appreciate if you would join us in a moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for joining us, whether you're here or watching online. Hope you enjoy. We've got a little bit of a new agenda this evening, so we'll try it out and see how it goes. First order of business, I'd like to ask for approval of the previous meeting minutes. This from the October 3rd meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
We have a motion by Zuliani, a second by Rigger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Okay, in your, we have our announcement of events and some correspondence we get to here. We have coming up, of course, we've got Trick or Treat and Truck or Treat. Trick or Treat will be within the city limits on the 31st of October. That's from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Right before that, we've got Truck or Treat at the Public Safety Complex on 10/28. That's Monday night from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. We have coming up this weekend, we have the Make It Shine event at the transfer station. That's at 444 Mudlick Road. If you are a City of Buckhannon Weekly Waste Collection customer, you are eligible to participate in that. You have to have an account with us that has trash pickup throughout the year via every single week. So that's at the transfer station. Again, that is from 7:30 in the morning to 3:30 p.m. this Saturday. Charles, we have the Charles Gibson Libraries Director's Report. The VIPS, which Chief Gregory might highlight here later on more about, we've got the 10th Anniversary Meet and Greet of the VIPS Program. That is on the 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Complex. We have the Veterans Day Parade coming up. That is on 10/31. I'm sorry, that's not 10/31. That was, that's on 11/11. I read the date right above it. Veterans Day Parade is on 11/11 at 10:00 a.m. It will observe a similar parade route as it has in years past, as well as what the homecoming parade last night observed, starting at the Charles Gibson Library and heading west on Main Street, followed by an event at Jawbone Park honoring our veterans. We have a tire collection event at the Public Works Facility at 395 Mudlick Road. That's directly across the street, across the road from the transfer station that's at our city's street department. That will be on the 16th of November from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We have paving services completion certificate as well, and then we have a FOIA request from the SBA Communication about applications for new cellular tower. So that is our reports of events, correspondence, and information for this evening. We would now open up to anyone who wishes to address the City Council. I would entertain a motion that we open the public comment section.
Send it.
There's a motion by Mrs. Bucklew. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. That motion carries. Hearing that there, I don't see any of anyone has any public comment this evening, so at the same time, I'd entertain a motion that we close the public comment section.
So move.
A motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rigger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. That motion carries unanimously. We are down to recognition of guests, and we welcome some representatives from Upsher County Schools, of which we have a Red Ribbon Week proclamation. So if you all would please join me up front for a photo op. Hello.
Hi.
So Red Ribbon Week is always a tongue twister, but it is a campaign that's offered to citizens, gives the citizens an opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to healthy lifestyles, including no drug use, and will be celebrated during the National Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd through the 31st of 2024. It is a proclamation by the City of Buckhannon. It's given under my hand, an official seal, that we do declare within the city limits and throughout our community that we observe Red Ribbon Week October 23rd through the 20, through the 31st, 2024, throughout our community. And I have signed the proclamation, so we will have a little photo op here.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you.
So here is the proclamation as well as copies.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we are down to the financial report. We will welcome Ambie Jenkins to the podium, where she will give her report, as well as we will ask for an approval to pay bills this evening, and approval for the financing of the fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus. Good evening, Ambie.
Hello. New agenda on my first, right?
Yep, you are.
Okay, I'm going to give you your balances for your enterprise fund September 30th. First, Waste Collection Board, money market checking, $1,866,000. Savings at $318,000. You have a letter of credit for the landfill at $64,000. Water Board, money market and checking, $1,048,000. Working capital and savings at $907,000. Sanitary Board, money market and checking, $884,000. Working capital funds there are $463,000, and the stormwater funds at $190,000. We've been doing many different things within the office where we, one thing though is we are gathering data to help, from, with the help of Region 7 and the Fire Department to get square footages of all these commercial structures, so that we'll be able to give you some information to base your square footage charge on for the fire fees. So we're working on that actively. In the item to the West Council for approval, bills, we have a few worth noting for you. You have a whole list of your bills in your packet, but the ones I want to point out to, $1,200 to Chamber of Commerce, contribution for sponsorship of Leadership Upsher for next year. Actually, it's a 24-25 year. Tyler Technologies, $2,300 utility bill notification, auto pay, and IVR bank maintenance. $4,300 to ESO Solutions Accreditation Software for the Fire Department. $4,100 to Appalachian Equipment Solutions for service work and parts for the wheel loader for the Street Department. $4,000 to Benjamin Arisman for two weeks of mowing at the city lots. $1,600 to Centos for ADAs at the Colonial Theater. $7,800 to Resell Enterprises for repairs and painting of the gym at Stockard Youth Center. And $1,900, DPF Alternatives of West Virginia for the Stockard Bus Repairs.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the payment of our bills.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure. The repairs to the gym, is that fixing the floor before we put a new floor down?
They're painting the walls and repairing some of the walls and doors. They're not starting on the door yet. Those bids will be accepted the 20, I think it's the 28th.
28th.
Oh, okay.
Which we have scheduled a special Stockard meeting that evening. It's Monday night to open those bids.
Okay.
Now, this is just the walls and the doors, frames and things like that.
All right, thank you.
I do have one question. What did the Fire Department pay, what was the cost charged to the Fire Department for the new AEDs that they have?
The Fire Department?
Yeah.
This one here, you see, from Centos was for one AED. So each AED costs about that amount of money.
Through Centos?
Yes.
But there's other companies, I believe, that are significantly less expensive.
We went through Centos with these.
Yeah.
I assume that the Fire Department helped with maybe, Jerry might know that thing.
Yeah. But, you know, one thing I know is that, you know, you have that, and then they're going to want to change the pads, they're going to want to change the batteries. They're a very expensive company.
We got it through Centos. This one here at the Colonial Theater was $1,600.
Was it put up there or not? Yeah. It went to, JB reviewed the quote from Centos, and he advised us that it was better to purchase, they had a, like a lease agreement on those units with a, where they would do the maintenance, and he said that it was better to purchase, and the Fire Department could do the annual maintenance on them, change out the pads, check everything, as Jack was just alluding to. So it's on their schedule to come to each one of our facilities and do those.
Who's getting the text?
No, no, no. Fire Department, sorry. Yes.
Right, this, yeah, this can become a black hole with those devices.
Yes, yes.
Speaking from experience.
But, but yes, Jack, fire is to perform the maintenance on them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions relative to the approval of payment of bills? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the payment of our bills.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Randy, second by Jack. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Down to approval of financing for the Fire Department's self-contained breathing apparatus.
Okay, so the self-contained breathing apparatuses, we're, bids were taken out on those. You discussed those in your budget sessions in March. We did get the bids back on those, a low bid where that was from Municipal Emergency Services for $318,878. I asked for quotes for financing for seven years from the local banks, and I received the back interest from two of the banks to quote on those. The one that came in the lowest was First Community Bank at 3.99%.
I will disclaim, I had nothing to do with it.
The mayor had to remain out of the entire process.
It was not even done in our branch in Buckhannon, so, and I will abstain this evening if that is the will of the council to approve that quote.
I'll verify he had nothing to do with any of the correspondence for this. So I recommend, that was the low bid that came in. The next one that came in was 5%.
So we got 3.99%?
Yes, for seven years.
I move accept that.
I'll second.
So that's...
Citizens Bank.
Yeah, just saying that that was...
I'm sorry.
First Community Bank.
First Community Bank, yeah. Thomas.
You need the AED for Robbie.
And Bucklew, and the mayor's going to recuse himself, abstain from this, so I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with Mayor Skinner abstaining.
Thank you.
Who was that second, Randy?
For me?
The second on that, who was that?
It was Bucklew.
Me.
Thomas Bucklew.
I actually didn't know the rate until you just said it, so.
It's a good rate, very good rate.
That's a very good rate.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised.
Somebody said trouble tomorrow.
I hope people don't come flooding us with thinking that that's the rate that...
He made the comment, the good relationship with the city enticed him to give us a good rate for that.
I want to see if I can draw that for 3.99%. Do we know, those will be delivered for some time, correct?
It was...
Doesn't it look like it's away?
That's right, it'll be a few months before we get that.
Okay. Who is the other bank to bid?
Citizens.
Good, thank you.
All right, anything else, Ambie?
That's it.
All right. Well, you're...
What else you got?
I have nothing else. There may be discussion later about whole positions that you may ask questions or not.
Okay, got you. Up next, we have our Public Works Director, Mr. Jerry Arnold.
What is it, or Jerry?
Oh, whichever.
I'm sorry. Hello, Ethan. Good evening. So Jerry and I spoke with Incova, the insurance representative, this week. We went over the, some of the accidents for personnel over the past couple of years. He was overall happy and seemed complimentary of the workplace, or lack thereof incidents. He's going to send us a letter saying some things we can prove on that haven't received that yet, and whenever future ends, that we're going to look at addressing in the future. Street Department, there's about 40 feet of fence left as of the day to be installed. But, three-point lot and Cokerball Court was scheduled to be painted at the beginning of this week. With the weather, it didn't happen, and we're hoping to get it during some of the nice weather coming up in the next week or so. That also puts the pavement behind. East Main Street was completed today. Franklin is scheduled to be completed tomorrow with Cleveland Avenue next week, one day. And we've also paved Lempel Lot and some of the parking lot at the facility at the Street Department, trying to get all the pavement wrapped up for the year before the flames close. The Waste Department, I believe, Mayor already touched on, Free Dump Day is Saturday at Transfer Station, and Tire Ring, it's the day is November 16th. And in the Sewer Department, we've been catching up on some tasks that we got behind on, while working on Island Avenue. They also completed a small storm sewer project, upgrading some lines and drop inlets along Ridgie Street, in conjunction with the Street Department project. And Cody Tenny passed his Class 3 wastewater operator exam to be able to operate the plant now, that's always a big plus when somebody passes that. Water Department is continuing their work along Island Avenue. They have just about completed the main line, and I believe started on a few service whichovers. They got one of the features installed with ARPA funding, and they have also had Eric Tomlinson pass his Class 4 water operator's license, so that has allowed them to move to a Ford main rotation, which is also a big benefit to the plant. And in engineering, the Tenderton Booster Station, we've been preparing contract B punch list for the contractors to complete. The Grant 2 for the FEMA hazard mitigation, the site meeting for the fencing around Madison Street scheduled for next Tuesday, that'll wrap up that grant. Stockard Youth Project, the replacement of the gym tile floor is out to bid, and the bid opening is October 28th at 1:30. The WBDOH Transportation Program, Morton Avenue Project is currently working on the force account options required by the DOH. This is showing what the city is capable of with equipment and manpower. And the CMH Development Project is scheduled to begin in mid-December for the sanitary sewer, sewer and water will continue after that in the spring of 2025. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ethan? Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Your report, thank you. Have a good evening. Up next, the City Police Department report. Good evening, Chief.
Chief. A few things to report, Mayor. I did invite our peer colleagues on Erica Bennett to come tonight and give an update to council on her program, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to do that under my report. I know you had a couple of things, agenda items.
Sure.
If you wanted to address that first before...
Yeah, let's address the agenda items first. We have your report, and we also have, we have a recommendation to bring to the table from the Police Civil Service Commission, and then also to set a time and date for interview candidates.
Okay. So just a few things to update regarding the police departments. Very busy with a number of initiatives on the training front. We did host AED Supervisors class at the Public Safety Complex just this last Tuesday. We will also be hosting a Drug Investigation class tomorrow at the Public Safety Complex as well. As you mentioned earlier, Mayor, VIPS will be celebrating its 10-year anniversary with a meet and greet scheduled for Wednesday, October 23rd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. This will take place in the training room of the Public Safety Complex, and will serve as a celebration of VIPS service to the city, as well as the citizens of our community, and it will also serve as a recruitment drive. VIPS remains alive and well with a number of very active members, and we hope to see that continue for many more years to come. So I would like to invite Mayor and all of council to attend this as we celebrate those folks who give so freely their time to this program.
What time is that going to be?
It'll be 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, on next Wednesday, October 23rd. So there's been a number of recognitions that have been brought forth for this program, the most recent of which I've put in your packets was a record proclamation from West Virginia Senate. My understanding is also works from the governor as well. So again, it's next Wednesday, October 23rd, 6:00 p.m. We'll celebrate their service. The, and I can address this further under the agenda items, the police department does stand ready to proceed with the... The police department does stand ready to proceed with the hiring process. We have completed the background investigations into our candidates, the top three names that have been submitted to council tonight. So, at council's will and pleasure, we're ready to proceed with that. Police Department will once again present its Halloween safety programs, that time of year where we go to local elementary schools and see students of that age, where we deliver our Halloween safety message. So we plan on doing that the week of October 21st. We'll also be hosting the trunk or treat event in conjunction with the Family Resource Network of Upsher County. This event will take place in the Public Safety Parking Lot on Monday, October 28th, from 6:30 to 8:30. The police department will also be conducting racial profiling training for City Hall staff here in City Hall on Wednesday, October 30th. This training is an extension of our CLIA requirements focusing on this subject matter. We have begun meetings already, meeting with our public safety partners as well as Strawberry Festival staff to begin planning for the 2025 West Virginia Strawberry Festival. Meetings have been underway and we do plan on meeting regularly as we craft our plans for that event. During the week of November 11th, I'll be attending a CLIA training in Jacksonville, Florida. This training focuses on policies, trends, best practices in regards to accreditation requirements and the CLIA process. And Mayor, that's all I have under my report.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Gregory before we get to the line items? Hearing none. In your packet, members of city council, you have before you, about midway or so back, three candidates that the Police Civil Service Commission has certified to us. They are these in order, Christopher Dale Spotlow, Christopher Henry Lee Claus, and Michael Allen Hayman. All scored at or above 80%. I would ask that you consider accepting those names and also to let set a time and date to when we would like to interview these candidates.
When would be a good time to do this so we can get them in, in training, in January? Is it?
It's my understanding the tentative date is in January. I checked on a, on a scheduled date, nothing has been solidified yet, but it's my understanding that the tentative date, as it has historically been, will be in January.
So, how many weeks prior do you need to have this?
So, it used to be, it used to be at least a month, month and a half prior. They, they no longer have a deadline date now, it's a couple rolling application process. But obviously, the sooner the better, especially since, of course, historically, the West Virginia State Police Academy was the only police academy in the state. That changed over the last couple of years when Fairmont State had a training academy. That only lasted for two sessions until they stopped training new recruits. They just do in-service training at that location now. So now, the West Virginia State Police Academy is yet again, the only academy in West Virginia. So, I would imagine, even though it's a rolling process, obviously it's first come, first served with the application process, the sooner the better.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a vote.
Say 3 o'clock.
Does the 28th, does the 28th not work for you, David?
Oh, no, that's okay, I just thought, I mean, that's next Thursday and I'm gonna fly in tomorrow. I'm just trying to make it sooner, sooner the better, Mayor. I'm okay either, Dave.
I, I'd like to see if we couldn't do it Monday, the 28th at 3 o'clock, if everyone could make that work.
I can make it.
You're, you're still closing?
Yeah.
You're good?
Yeah, mine is making it.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion that we, that we hold those interviews beginning at 3 o'clock on Monday, October 28th.
So move.
Motion by Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zoliani, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign a post, that motion carries. Would you like to?
Yes, sir. Mayor, as you recall, I've talked at length about the peer liaison program. Of course, council's well aware of that, as we entertained the possibility into entering into partnership with First Choice Services last, oh, actually at the beginning of this year. I know the concept was first brought to our attention in December last year from the owner of First Choice Services, Paula Manon. She did appear before council in January to present the topic and that was a partnership that collectively we decided to enter into. And that began in earnest in April of this year and began with the hire of Erica Bennett, who is our peer liaison that is embedded with the police department. Again, the purpose of the program is to focus on a variety of different issues, I won't try to steal Erica's thunder here, but just to rehash the program. The focus is on individuals with substance, experiencing substance use disorder, homelessness, behavior issues. Through First Choice Services, Erica does have a lot of connections with resources where she's able to reach out and try to get these folks connected who are in need. Again, the goal of the program is really the same as, as, as the police departments and that is to get folks experiencing these types of issues off the streets and in the wellness. And, so I've invited Erica tonight to introduce her to the mayor and council tonight, formally, to talk a little bit about herself, a little bit about the program, maybe highlight a couple of the success stories that she's had these past six months since the program's inception. So Mayor, at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Erica Bennett.
Sure. Thank you. Welcome.
Erica.
Hi. My name is Erica Bennett. As Chief explained, I work for First Choice Services. I'm the peer liaison office with the Buckingham Police Department. In a nutshell, my job is to kind of bridge the gap between jails and institutions and like rehabs, mental health treatment, things like that. So, First Choice Services started in the late 90s with 1-800-GAMBLER, it was kind of blossomed from there, that's still a hotline we have. Our biggest one that we are under the umbrella is Help For West Virginia, which if you call that line, it gets you into rehabs, mental health treatment, things like that. And works with mode of care to provide transportation, mode of care not always being super, what do I want for reliable. I can transport, I do have the authority to transport people, which I do all over the state of West Virginia. Then we have West Virginia Navigator, if somebody loses their insurance or if they just don't have insurance, if you don't qualify for Medicaid, we can get you qualified for low-cost insurance. Within 72 hours, it puts a fast track on that, especially with people that are trying to get into treatment. 211, which connects people with United Way for those kinds of resources. We have 988, which is the Suicide Crisis Lifeline. My very first call when I started at the police department was a suicide call and unfortunately, the man had already successfully completed the suicide by the time we got there. But we also have a Children's Crisis Referral Line and I was able to connect his nephew and his sister who were the ones who found him. So it's all kind of interconnected. And then we have the peer program, which is where I come in. We have West Virginia CIT, which is the Crisis Intervention Team. I went through that training in Charleston a couple months ago. What am I missing? Yeah, so basically, I, I go out and around the streets all the time, go out in the woods hiking to find people who need resources that I can offer. I connect them with food, housing, mental health treatment, substance use disorder treatment. Instead of that revolving door of like in and out of jails and institutions, which I experienced in my life. And I'm one of the ones who came out and I'm on the other side, like trying to help the other people get into the same position because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for someone helping me do that. I don't really have much else to say, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
How long have you been doing this?
This job, I trained in Charleston in March and I started in the office in April, but I have worked in recovery since 2020.
When you go out to these situations, are you by yourself or do you have somebody with you?
It just depends. So, lately, with what's been going on, I don't go out in the woods by myself usually. But yeah, most of the time I just go out, I know where specific people stay. And I just go out and, you know, sit and talk with them and ask them what it is that they need right now at that certain time. And there was one girl, I sat down near Poe Bridge, just sat there with her for eight and a half hours because she was having those suicidal ideations and I kind of talked her off that ledge, got her some mental health treatment, stability, and then took her back to her house.
Is there a common age group that this happens to?
No. The most common age range that I would say that I come in contact with would be mid-20s to mid-30s right now. The children are few and far between unless they're kind of caught in the crossfires.
I'm gonna direct this to Chief. Be unfair to ask Erica if there's been an improvement amongst some of our more troubled citizens, but do you feel, you know, can you give us your overview of how you think this program has worked? Not specifically, I mean Erica sounded like she's done a wonderful job, but what can you tell the citizens you've seen as a result?
I think that, you know, we've talked about this in a number of seminars with other agencies who, who either A, have peer liaisons themselves, or B, are exploring the concept. I know the city of Weston attended a seminar such as that and they are now in the process because of these discussions and the process of adopting a peer program themselves. So, one of the big, and again, the, the focus of the discussion is one of the biggest hurdles that you have is buy-in to the program. Because a lot of folks either see things black and white, that, that the police should be the solution and you should arrest your way out of it, which you absolutely cannot do for none of these issues, substance use, homelessness, behavior issues. Certainly, there's a law enforcement component to that, but that's, as I've spoken at length about it at previous council meetings, that is, that's not 100% of the response. So, so again, the hurdle remains just the buy-in to that, through either that, that viewpoint, some, I've heard, through, through our program as well as other programs like this, that it encourages this type of behavior and that, that's a common misconception, that couldn't be further from the truth. The peer program has the same goal, as I mentioned earlier, as what we do and that is to get folks experiencing substance use disorder, homelessness, behavior issues off the streets and into wellness. So that's the, you know, and of course, you have, you have that hurdle not only within your agency, but within the community as well. And so, my response to that is, first and foremost, within the agency, is, is to get each of our employees to buy into it by understanding the mission of what the program is and understanding the concept. And really, from the get-go, you know, I think it was like your first day was with the department. We held a department meeting where Erica got to meet all the officers, they got to meet her, they, they swapped numbers, they all have her number, she has their number and, and just, just conducted a general Q and A of what the program is, what it does, what it can and cannot do. And so, I think that initial icebreaker was definitely our foot in the door. And I've seen, just, just from that point of view, some, some great buy-in from, from our officers who, who understand the kind of the bigger picture of what we're trying to accomplish here. So the next part of that is buy-in from the community and of course, that ebbs and flows and it really boils down to perceptions and personal experiences, whether it be direct experience with these types of issues or indirect, just because maybe they're, see it or aware of it. And so, our response to that is very similar to what we're doing tonight and that's just getting that information out. What, who Erica is, what the program is, what it's about, what it's doing. That's why I specifically wanted her to, I'll just talk about the, the program itself, it's highlight some of the success stories that she has placed, because that's really the true challenge. You really, and I think you could probably back me up on this, I don't know that you could quantify in this, in this regard, success, because recovery is, is different for every individual. Recovery looks different and, and it works very different across the board. One program may be very successful for an individual and not taken at all for another individual. So we see that and that's really just, that's just the, the reality of the matter that some people you, you'll be able to reach, some people you won't be able to reach. Some people you'll have to connect and connect and connect several times over before maybe you get some headway and, and gain some ground going. And I think that you've really, just in the last six months, I think you've seen the gamut of all of those experiences. And so, I think the real success lies in the fact that we have this program here, we are, and really the whole, the whole thought press, the whole thought process behind exploring it, you know, because when it was introduced to me originally, I saw it as an opportunity. Because I, I understand the greater nature of the social problems that we face in our community and I understand that, and I've said this before, that multifaceted problems require a multifaceted solution. You cannot have a singular focus for a complex problem. So, I saw that as an opportunity because of that, that, that this was a way to think outside the box and approach these issues from more than just a singular approach. So I think that in and of itself, the fact that we as a city have embraced this program is successful in and of itself. And as we continue moving forward, planting these seeds about what the program can and can't do, what it's about, what it has done, I, I think that when you plant seeds, you hope for something fruitful. And I think that these success stories, as we continue moving forward, is the fruit that we, we hope this program to bear. So I think that's truly where the success will lie with that.
Well, I appreciate that and I just want to say I'm very proud that the city took the steps and introduced the program.
I agree.
And, and, you know, there's one thing that I learned very quickly as a public figure, nothing brought the two banks of supporters out there, whether you have conservatives and the maybe less conservative liberals, whatever, but I heard a common thread, they all enjoyed when it came to seeing some homeless person on Main Street, we don't, we don't want that, somebody in the park, we don't want that. Well, what's the answer? Well, we don't know, but we just don't. So, you know, Erica, thank you, I mean, because those folks still need somebody to talk to and that eight and a half hours was well spent if a human life was, was saved. And I tell you, one final thing very quickly, I produced pageants for years with some of the finest young people in the, in the country, nearly 7,000 young people walked across my stage and there was never a year that I didn't encounter somebody that had problems, mental struggles, they could be from the wealthiest families in the state, from the most successful senators and doctors and lawyers, their children. There is no, there's no set problem, family, area, whatever, it can happen to any of us. So, thank you for what you're doing for our community.
Boy, I think Matt, you had a nice similar innovation there and I agree with what you're saying 100%. And, you know, it's sort of shocking sometimes when we're sitting at a city council meeting to hear the challenges that we have as a society. I remember when the counselors from the school system said that 43% of our students enrolled in our system didn't live with either one of their biological parents. And, you know, the question I had, my age, is trying to think back what it was like when I was in elementary school and junior high and high school, the changes that have taken place in our culture and our society today is unbelievable. And, you know, when I was in elementary school and junior high, we didn't have counselors, period. If you got in trouble, you saw the principal or the assistant principal, you'd never went to a counselor. And I'm just really concerned with what's happening with social media and technology and the entertainment industry, that those, I believe, are somewhat responsible for what we're facing in our society today. Plus, the substitutes that people take, you know, drugs and so forth. To me, it's very scary. And I have 11 grandchildren and I worry about what are they gonna be facing in the next five or 10, 15, 20 years. And I appreciate Erica, what you're doing. I'm glad you gotta go through this yourself in many ways, because that is a good training, quite frankly. It's sad that you had to do that, but you're gonna help hopefully, a lot of people. And, you know, I'm glad we're doing this. And I think we ought to continue it and good luck for the future. Do you need people to help you in any way? Are there volunteers out there that can help you at all?
To what you were saying before you asked that question, I am in. To what you were saying before you asked that question, I am in recovery from substance use, and, you know, mental health, untreated mental health is one of the big problems that we have. And I still to this day, like, I have a therapist on call. So, if I need that, I can use that outlet. I actually went through the drug court program here, the 26 judicial court system in 2019, and like the structure and accountability that I had when I was in the drug court program, like, just brought that passion to me to like, help other people going through the same things. Do I need help? Yes, please.
And nobody will know better than you. I have been contacted the last week to help somebody that just lost their vision in the last two months. And I've been alive for 32 years, and I'm going to mentor this person, hopefully, because you can do a lot better job mentoring if you're experiencing the same challenges. I don't care if anybody has, if they have vision, they can't communicate the same way that somebody has been alive for a lot of their life.
Yeah, I love the experience.
And so, you're doing the same thing with what you have faced as an individual.
Yeah.
So, congratulations, keep it up.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Erica.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief, for bringing the report to us tonight, sir.
Thank you.
All right, up next, State Attorney's Report.
Here it appears.
New agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There are no, the items under Old Business, under this part of the agenda, are not positioned for advancement, but I can update you on each of them. With respect to the Wesleyan Property Exchange, we have received one of the outstanding surveys from Potesta, and we just got one more, so good progress there. And with respect to the first due fire fees, I'm sure you are all aware, legislature took action last week that to place a statewide moratorium on new county, or new municipal fire fees, including ours. We are, you know, we are therefore in a holding pattern now, due to the state action, the governor signed that bill earlier this week, it was either yesterday or Tuesday. So, we are now kind of officially sidelined, at least until July 1st. Now, the city can still advance the ordinances, they just cannot take effect until, or at least, the ordinance extending the first due fire fee, or the fire fee to the first due area cannot take effect until July 1st of '25, the earliest. I will say, for the benefit of the members of council, we will be in a situation where we're going to have to engage in some pretty grants of advocacy this winter down in Charleston in order to preserve the city's rights to do what it needs to do. As of right now, the state's action constitutes an unfunded mandate for the city. The city remains liable to provide fire service in the unincorporated area of the county where it's a first due area without compensation. I have a real problem with that legally, but I think we're in a position where we have to just, we're going to have to, we're going to have to fight this out in February and March, and ensure that this imposition, which I would easily characterize as unjust and inequitable, imposition on the city, I make sure that we're going to be able to move past it and actually be able to recover fees for service. And with respect to the other matter that we discussed at the last meeting, with respect to the petition that is obviously now mooted with the submitted resignation of Councilor McCauley.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Neil? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a singular line item characterized under Old Business, I do not have an update for you, I have, I have been in contact with Ricky. Things are moving a little slower than first anticipated, so it's not looking like an October date will be set, but we will, we will be setting a meeting and a welcome to Prime Six when she is ready to do so here in the next, hopefully, before the end of the year. So, we'll keep you posted. Under New Business Discussion, we have a few line items to take up. First up is Human Resource Management. Council needs to decide if we are going to be looking for an in-house position to field HR matters, or if we are going to look for an outside firm to contract with, that could also possibly be utilized for payroll services as well, because HR and payroll typically go together in the firm world. So, I'd like to open up that discussion to council members at this time. I would like us to move forward with looking for a solution in that department.
I'll start, I've been somewhat vocal about it. I really believe that we do need to hire an individual here when human resource situations arise, oftentimes it's very timely, depending on a firm or to mercy of their availability. Also, you know, if we contract a firm, why not just go to Membership the Shrim, and, you know, go from there? I don't see a whole lot of difference with that. I really believe that shoe leather in here, when situations arise, can be addressed in a timely manner. And we're talking human resources, and so that is administration and personnel typically. And anything we can do to enable things to operate more smoothly and timely, I'm all for, and I think a full-time position here is the way to go. That's my two cents.
Any other comments on this matter? Appreciate that, Mr. Rigger.
What are the cost differences between hiring an individual versus hiring a firm?
I'm not, I'm not sure. So, although I understand what Mr. Rigger's saying, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, I'm, when I drafted the agenda, I wasn't thinking about it in this way, but I'm almost wondering if we shouldn't look for also quotes from a firm, just to see what it is that they provide, what would they cost us? I mean, because I really don't know. Firms do exist, cities do use firms. You know, I think if it weren't, if it were absolutely not the way to go, firms wouldn't exist. Large corporations use firms, small corporations use firms. So, I can see both sides. I, with respect to what Mr. Rigger said, I can't say that I disagree with it. I like the idea of having somebody in the building, but I also know that there could be an awful lot of downtime too, because the way, and you can't ever anticipate it, but the way HR goes, and I think Ambi could attest to it, you could have a spike where you're really, really, really busy, and you have a lot coming at you at one time, and you could go through a small period of time, or even a moderate period of time, where you don't have a lot of, the water's calm. So, I just, I think it's, I think both could be worth looking at. I know I put it on there as, on the agenda as an either/or proposition, but, you know...
Along those lines, can we ask Ambi a question?
Sure.
So, do you feel that, you've done all of this stuff, do you feel that we have enough work to hire just an HR person by themselves? Should we consider hiring an HR person who also does payroll? Well, you know, I'm not going to ask you the firm part, we can, we know we can get a firm, we can look at firms that can provide all of that. To answer the mayor's concern, do you feel like they would be setting on their handleup?
So, I've been doing this for quite some time. So, what I do is, is I do the payroll, I handle the HR. With consultation of the city attorney, we deal with discipline matters and writing up. I probably average with payroll 20 to 30 hours per week in payroll processes, enrolling people insurance, paperwork, just getting them implemented in there, making sure the background checks are done, the whole gamut, from payroll to reporting, to HR issues, to monitoring the handbook. The other things that could be done that I don't really, I can't really fit in to this, I mean, this is, you all know me, I put in 60 to 70 hours per week here, and that takes up quite a bit of my time. So, other things really that should be included with HR is constant training. I can't go to all the training that there is. I do go to training, but I can't keep up with all the training. I depend on Tom, like, when I run into issues, let's research this, let's make sure we can do this right. Periodically, doing the recommendations for the handbook, which I do. Long-term, it should be development of job classifications, things that we've kind of been kind of morphing all together with supervisors, so supervisors are helping with that. Being involved in interviews and selection of personnel, I think HR needs to be involved in that, take some of that pressure off of the supervisor. When it comes to reprimands, HR should be involved in that, in the write-ups. Helping with improvement plans, I've done that, that's, you learn, that becomes a skill. Helping a supervisor through an improvement plan is almost a skill, and understanding how to deliver that to that employee.
Another, not to interrupt you, but another set, another big part of HR is fully understanding our benefits package. And, you know, I could see us, if, depending on the direction we go here, I mean, I think, I think Pete has done a good job for us here, but that's an extra expense that we have, that an HR person could be well-versed in our, because Pete isn't bringing PEA to us. Pete is just here as someone who can explain and answer questions on benefits to our employees. An HR person who's dedicated just to HR should be able to have those conversations.
Yeah, and that's where you get into, if they can do the gamut, the entire gamut of everything, knowing that they aren't their own supervisor as well. That's one thing the council needs to take control of, that there is a supervisor, this person, they aren't managing their own time. If they're working in this office and they're downtime, you go to the filing room. I mean, there should be enough for them to develop, if they're doing everything.
If an HR person is effective in their position, there will be no downtime.
I don't think so either.
I mean, there's too many tasks, I mean, training employees, maintaining their training, and like you said, benefits, insurance. Okay, how about workers' comp? That comes, that's all involved.
Plus the continuing education, I mean, I don't hire, I don't hire an attorney based on just a diploma that hangs on his or her wall, that, wow, they graduated the school 25 years ago. Well, laws have changed over 25 years ago, they change daily, they change, you see what Charleston does, we see what DC does, so they have to continually be staying up with continuing education with HR, correct?
Well, they have to be up to date with HR, I think, applicable laws.
Right, right.
And regulations, there's no question about that. It'll be a burdensome type job if it's done right.
And having a firm disengages a lot of things. The firm will do your payroll, the firm will take care of certain things, but being specific to this organization, my experience with people who, municipalities that have hired outside firms, it's a disconnect. You're feeding them the information to do payroll and reports, but you're basically doing it. You're just giving them the information, they're saying, "Are you signing off?", is that correct? That's what you're supposed to be doing.
Honestly, I think a firm is more adaptable to somebody like me, when I had a small business, and I had two or three employees, I couldn't afford a full-time HR person. That's who firms really help. When you have 100 employees and...
Well, we have 130 when you count our full-time employees.
130 with a seasonal part-time.
You got less than 100 full-time, about 30 or 40 part-time.
That come and go with the wind.
I, I'll take a look at this in a different way. First of all, I appreciate, Jack, what you said, and Ambi, what you said. I'm a little concerned that, I'm looking at this from a financial responsibility, and I think at some point in time, the human resource person would be good for us to do. I also think we need to look at technology too, because of what's happening there. But I'm very concerned about that, as the city municipality, what should we move toward right now? I mean, I just heard that the legislature has told us that we can't charge the first due, even though it's our responsibility to go do that. So, that's going to cost us quite a bit of money. We may get relief six months from now, but we don't know yet for sure, okay? I also am very concerned about Stalker. You know, we took on Stalker when the county commission just threw it away, and I think we had three or four people that were with the city that thought were their hearts rather than their brains. Maybe they had their brains too, but they wanted to go in there and protect the individuals that were going to be utilizing Stalker, and now we're looking at a $5 or $6 million capital program to put a new billing in there, or update the billing and so forth. I don't think we should do all these things right away, necessarily, sort of sit back. What should our responsibility be as the people that are helping the municipality, the city of Buchanan? You know, do we want to continue with that capital expense for Stalker? I'm not for it, quite frankly.
So, for the human resources, are you saying we should wait?
I think we ought to try to sit down, you know, Ambi's done a magnificent job, and I think I would be favorably disposed to getting a human resource person, and probably a technology person too.
That's what this discussion is.
Yes, but the point is, I don't want to say go with it now until we make some of these other tough decisions that I think are out there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's how I feel about it.
I understand that, David, but HR is absolutely imperative.
Yes.
The single most lawsuit-driven area of any organization lies within HR.
Robbie, I'm well aware of that. I had over 700 people that I was responsible for at one time in a corporate...
But you're saying we should wait.
I'm, two or three months, is that going to hurt us?
It's going to take us two to three months to put out a job description and to hire anyway.
I am asking for us to do some work with areas that we're concerned about, and we ought to be concerned about.
If we, and I respect what you're saying, Mr. Collins, but if we do that, we'll never, we'll just continue to kick things down. Let me finish.
No, no, let me finish. I don't agree with that. Why kick it down the road? Just have a deadline to do it.
It's on the agenda tonight, I think that it's prudent for us to make a decision to start exploring these, and that's, it's really what you're saying. But if you're wanting us to wait for two or three months before we start exploring again, I think that's horrible on us.
We can explore, I don't have a problem exploring.
That's what it's on the agenda for.
This is, all this is, is to decide our direction and then begin the exploration, that's all this is.
I've been saying for three years, after we had the sales tax and so forth, we don't have a plan for the future as far as I know.
No, we do. I'm not going to go down, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
All right, enough, all right, let's, are we, I'm going to ask for a motion that we...
You're down, you need to make a comment? No, 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 I'll make a motion.
Okay, that we explore the possibility of hiring a dedicated full-time HR person for the city of Buchanan. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by Mr., Sanders second by Mr. Rigger. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call for that question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All right. Also, David, just make sure we're all on the same page, there is a recommendation here from the Technology Committee about IT, we'll get to that in just a second. We, as we all know, we now have a council seat vacant, we need to decide our way forward. There are a few ways in which we can do this. The charter of the city of Buchanan is not specific, as we know, we can do one of the following. As we know, we can do one of the following. We can not fill it and wait till the next election, not having a special election, that is because we're not permitted to have special elections anymore, that is one way. The second way is accepting the next highest vote getter from the most recent election, that is one possibility. Or the next, the third way is to open it up to receipt, asking for applications, hold interviews, and the council will decide amongst who applies, who will fill the vacant council seat. It is now, this line item is now open for council discussion and idea.
My idea is to take applications, I think that's the best way to work. See who's interested and why they're interested, and who's going to be here for the good of the city.
Okay. Jack?
Thank you, Pam. Thanks for starting, because I was on a roll, I was going to take off. No, I really feel that, I think we need an ordinance or a policy, maybe not an ordinance, but a policy that we follow, where we take applications and we look at the total picture. And in that whole process, we could include, you know, have they run for city council before? If so, you know, what was the margin of error in their loss in not obtaining a council seat? You know, those things can all be taken into consideration in the application process. And, you know, it's been five months since the election, a lot of water under the bridge. What if the next highest vote getter does not want the council seat? Would we go to the next one after that, or the next one after that? And I think applications, you're guaranteed to at least fill a position, and we can base it on the information that we have as far as qualifications, et cetera, and what their political experience has been in the past if they ran for the position. So, I'm in agreement with Pam, or, I'm sorry, I need to be professional, that we take applications, that it could be inclusive of all that information.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Any other comments or ideas?
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say application as well. Originally, I thought just take the person, the fourth place vote getter in the last election, but as you made points, what if that person doesn't want to do that? Or what if we need to replace another seat? Do we just keep going down to the fifth, sixth, seventh person, which doesn't make a lot of sense once I thought about it? So, I agree with application.
I've wrestled with this, as the mayor knows, I've wrestled with, you know, there's a lot of validity to say the next highest vote getter, you know, that's what, that's what the will of the people said, but four or five months down the road, what if something happens between that time, like law enforcement rolls up to their house? I mean, you don't know. And if you're in a situation where the next highest vote getter's sitting there with the cloud, you give a leg up. But, but, let's go with the application process, is my recommendation.
Okay. I appreciate everybody's thoughts on it. I, you know, I have long been a supporter of the next highest vote getter. I've supported that in the past. I do, I do believe in the validity of it. I do believe that the people, I understand what everyone's saying, I do. And I can see, I can see merit and validation to it, of course. I, I just, I do, I am a believer in elections, I believe that people that show up to the polls, that, you know, I do believe that that means something, and always should mean something. So, I, I support elevating the person with the next highest, receiving the next highest votes, but I would also say that I support going to that, to the most recent certified election. I do believe that is, that is also very much important, because even that Mr. Rigger pointed out, five months is a long time, but two, over two years is a lot, a real, that's a very long time. A lot can change, in five months, a lot can change, a lot more can change in two years. But I, you know, I will, I will certainly yield to the majority of the council, council has the votes on this, it's on here for council to decide the method. I just wanted to, of course, make my thoughts known that I support the next highest vote getter. I always have, and I do see the, I see that because, you know, we stepped up to, those of us who sit here, we all stepped up to run. It's a grueling process, and I think that that means something, you know, so. But, at this time, hearing how the council feels, I'd entertain a motion, or I'll let a council member make, Jack, Pam, anybody?
I'll make the motion that we will take letters of interest as applications for elections.
And what do we want to have a due date on that?
Probably by at least the second meeting in November.
I would like to go before that.
Well, I'm saying they have solidified, is what I'm saying.
So, as in their first meeting would be the second meeting in November?
Yeah.
I think that's plausible, because we technically, we do not have a meeting until, we have two weeks between now and the next meeting. We have five Thursdays in the month of October, so...
Let's say October the 31st.
As far as that's application deadline?
Yes, getting letters of interest.
I'd pick it up more than that.
The council, the council, per my, per counsel from Mr. O'Neill before the meeting, we can, if this is the will of the council, which it sounds like it is, the council can announce tonight that as of, as of tonight, we are opening the application opportunity. And we have the ability, because the charter does, the charter is not specific, the charter does not say how long the timeframe will be, the charter doesn't even say how we're even, how it is even supposed to be done. It's open-ended as to how the council can decide.
There doesn't have to be a timeline between the applications and when they actually take office.
Well, I mean, we can decide all of that. The council has the ability to decide that. So, right now, today is October 17th. We could say that we could accept applications to the 25th, which is Friday, to the 28th, which is Monday, the 31st, however you all want to set it up.
I'd recommend close of business Friday, 25th.
Close of business Friday, the 25th.
More than another time, I think.
Along with the applications, could we request a roadmap?
Sure. Yeah, I think, yeah. What if we did this? What if we did by the, as long as it was postmarked by Saturday, the 26th, which means everything would arrive here on Monday morning, the 28th? Want to do that? Just gives it one more day, a lot of times, elections do that, you know, so...
And sometimes people don't have time to do it until the weekend ends.
So, if we, as long as it's postmarked by Saturday, the 26th, will arrive here on the 28th, and then we will begin the process of evaluating and setting up an opportunity for interviews.
Who do you want it addressed to? Anybody specifically?
We'll stick to that. Well, we'll put that in the, the city of Buchanan, for sure, 70 East Main Street, Buchanan, West Virginia, so...
All right, we need a second on that motion.
Second.
All right, so the motion by Mrs. Buckle to accept applications and...
Postmarked by October.
Postmarked by October 26th.
I think everything else will fall into place.
Yes. And so that was seconded by Mr. Thomas, is, call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign. That motion carries. All right, as alluded to earlier, right before that line item, we have a recommendation from the Technology Committee, staffing and in-house IT information, or IT or information technology.
Is Amby still out there?
I am.
Okay, there you go.
I've done that, too.
Yeah.
You want me to knock?
Well, I don't know if the mayor doesn't.
I believe the, I mean, if I understand it correctly, that the Technology Committee has met and thrashed around the same idea of either hiring a firm or hiring a person, an in-house person to handle our IT needs. We, we right now are technically operating outside of a contract. The contract that we had, the business is no longer in business. The owner of the business, or the successor of the business under a different name has been taking care of our technology needs. I don't, I don't believe that we're at all upset with, or, you know, I think, I think we're okay with where things are, but I think that where the conversation has taken place is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amby or Randy, is that it would make sense, similar to HR, our needs, to have someone on staff in the building in case there is an issue or, you know, just to uniform everything. We have, we do have kind of a hodgepodge of technology now, old and new, and we do need to make sure that all of our, all of our wires are where they need to be, and that we are as safe as we need to be as we are handling sensitive information, personal information, credit cards, bank accounts, we do sweep payments, we are, we do electronic bill, or electronic payroll, so it's an important part of our operation. Have I captured that correctly?
Absolutely, and I'll just, before Amby speaks, you know, again, I had a small business, but my business operated over multiple states, and we handled birth certificates, sensitive documents to prove residency, prove citizenship and so forth, and I had multiple offices in multiple states, and I had to employ a full-time IT person. I just didn't feel comfortable not doing that and not making sure that everything, and we still ran into a few problems here and there, because somebody, an employee opened up personal emails, and somebody was looking for loans, and somebody was doing this and that, got virus, and just, you know, it was just something you got to stay on top of all the time. But, Amby, I think council would benefit from hearing from you, because you and Jerry both, actually, Jerry Arnold, because of your experience with the different systems that we, that we do have.
Well, I'm not an IT person, but I know that I came here when the first computer came in the back door.
And now we have how many?
We have well over a hundred computers, and that's not counting our servers, our printers, our SCADA systems, our cameras. We have probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred different types of devices within the network that are connected through internet or through wires, through printers. So, what we run into is, we meet people often when we run into error messages, or the printer doesn't work, or something's not connected, or now the virus is trying to attack us. We, you know, we have servers that run our entire core software, we want to make sure those are up to date and functioning, and there's space on them, then we make sure the backups are working. Training with your employees, we've done some training in the past, and that needs to be kept up. We have ten facilities that have different types of IT functions within them. Our supervisors have tried to help when something goes wrong. Our supervisors aren't IT people. They really have, they, we aren't an IT company, but it's as if a lot of that sometimes comes back, we have to troubleshoot something quickly, because you just want to get it working and get back to work. So, it's become pretty much a daily issue, something happens daily within it. We need policies written, we've, recently, the Public Service Commission has actually mandated us to go through cybersecurity assessments. So, we went through the cybersecurity assessments, and there are things we need to address. To address that, you have to have someone on staff that's implementing it and making sure it's working, and writing the policies that they want to have done, making sure no one's plugging thumb drives into any computer, making sure no one's using their personal email on it. We can, just can't monitor that. We need to make sure our antiviruses are up. The guys out in the field, they're using the computer, they're not checking to make sure, how much do I have on this drive? And is antivirus up to date on it? What was that message about? Oh, is that an invoice? Click, and then you're attacked. So, we need, I don't want to mean it's dire, but again, we've gotten much bigger than we were before, and just us as people here in the office know a little bit. Jerry knows a lot about network, but we are not IT people. We need someone that, again, taking the training on it, understanding what the recent risks are, how to get the firewalls up, how to make sure we get two-factor authentication on everything. So, that's it in a nutshell, there's a whole lot more to it. I'm not an IT person, but I know we need IT help on a consistent basis.
The more you get to know, the more dangerous it is sometimes, that's the scary part.
This could also help us with our insurance as well.
We have it.
We will get credits on our insurance, whereas we probably aren't getting them now, because we do not, we can't, we can't name anyone that is specialist, that is a specialist as an IT person within our organization.
You hit that right on the head. The last assessment we had, certain things we have to implement to keep our cybersecurity insurance. They're telling us in the insurance world, if you're not trying to protect yourself, you're not, we're not bothering you, you can drop it.
So, this was, in my, in my eleven years in the business, this was, this was, this quickly became number two, as far as where the threats were behind HR. The projection is, is that it's going to surpass HR, because although the claims are less frequent, when they happen, they are massive. And our insurance agent would tell us that, too. I mean, that is, that is, that is the accepted principle in the industry of, yes, you may go on a flat line of no claims, no claims, no claims, no claims, when you have one, it could be extremely costly, and it could result in class action lawsuit, because where you had a breach, where you've lost one social security number or one bank account, you could have lost a lot, and if someone decides to join in, to sue us over it, it could, it could grow and grow and grow, and there could be no stopping it. So, it is, it is an area where we've got to seal up our borders here.
With Rich Clemens no longer here, it was especially important, because Rich helped us a lot.
Well, and as we know with technology, things change extremely fast. I mean, I don't know how, and this is nothing against Rich Clemens, I mean, Rich has been out of practice of it for a while, even if he was still in Buchanan, would he be the most up-to-date on where things are?
The committee that we had had two professionals on that operated IT businesses, I can tell you that very confidently. They had no reservations whatsoever when they learned what the network actually consists of. One knows our system actually. They said, you need a full-time IT person.
And again, this is, this is something that continuing education is a must. I don't care if you got a, had a degree twenty years ago from computer science, that doesn't impress me. It's what you're doing now, this day and place.
I guess my biggest comment would be, one, that's kind of a two-part, I guess. One is, we all know that every function we deal with anymore requires internet connection, but, and Ethan can tell you from our facility, that has been spotty almost on a daily basis. We had this conversation, he said, I can't, you know, when I can't get on the internet, I can't work on my computer. So, first of all, let me just be clear, that's one of the major necessities we have right now. Second of all, from the, from the IT committee, we're not talking about hiring someone that can do everything that needs to be done within the city of Buchanan. We're talking about that person, that that is their sole responsibility is to monitor our network. They are to go around, as Amby said, to the facilities, make sure the firewalls are up, the antivirus is up to date, and they are to be the liaison between the city and whatever, or whatever provider, whether it be a network engineer or a software engineer that we have to bring on board for a specific task. But an awful lot of our daily issues are as simple as mapping a drive, or connecting a printer, or bringing a new computer on board. So, again, as Amby said, a lot of that work has been tasked to, well, you know, the supervisor has figured it out in your, in your daily, in your daily job. So, again, we are not IT people. And as Amby said, our organization is of a size now where I believe it merits having that person that has full-time eyes on our network, or on our computers, on the system in general, so that's must be.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Well, I think we know, I think we know, I think we know what we need to do. So, is there a motion to support beginning the process of accepting applications for an in-house IT professional?
I also have the motion.
I'll second.
There is a motion by Mr. Thomas, there is a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there any further discussion on that matter? Hearing the need for none, I will call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. That motion carries. All right, finally, is there a motion to approve the building and wiring permits that you were sent this afternoon via email, and hopefully have had time to review?
I have to abstain.
Okay, there's an extension by Mr. Rigger. Is there a... Okay. There's an abstention by Mr. Rigger. Is there a motion, Mr. Sanders, motions? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bucklou. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, noting Mr. Rigger's abstention. Down to council member comments and announcements. We'll begin with Mrs. Bucklou over to the left. I would, I would also remind you that I'm asking for a brief executive session specific to property matters.
I'm glad we're moving forward to try to find an HR person and an IT person because Ambby's been doing all this stuff forever. And Ambby can't do it all forever, and she needs help. So I'm in favor of moving as fast as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Rigger?
I'm just going to say, I really appreciated the young lady's presentation. I'm sorry, your name slips my mind.
Erica.
Erica. You did well. I also saw the news report on one of the local stations with you and one of our officers. And you represented the city in yourself very well, and you need to be commended on that as well. So thank you. You're providing a tremendous service. I think the steps that we're taking on filling the vacancy, hiring the HR person and the IT individual, I think those are all steps in the right direction. And Ambby said she's not an IT person, but we all know that she is it. She has it factors.
She is.
Because Ambby does it all. So that's all I have to say. Top that.
I know we're in a competition also. Are you, are you, you know, you can, you're going to get a little more in your paycheck here? You're just, but under enough, Ambby?
It was up to Dave Thomas, I would.
You called it Dave Tom.
She's listening. She's listening.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, the, I have a lot of stuff I could say, but I won't.
We don't have that much.
The, I am concerned about the kind of monies that we're either going to potentially spend. I'm not talking about the human resource, the IT. But there are some issues that we've got to be very careful about and give serious thought to, which I think we will. And I'm very concerned about Tom's report about what the legislature did. And the, just doesn't provide any common sense. When I made a comment in the meeting a couple of months ago, that when I ran for city council, there were two principles that I believed in very firmly. Transparency, that's critically important, that we show all the information that we have to other individuals so they know why we made the decision. They may not agree with the decision, but at least they have the information. And the other is to have a level playing field.
Redesigned agenda, which flows well. It's going to be great to do the minutes from the agenda. So appreciate that. Congratulations to the BIPs coming up on 10 years. And Mayor, you were probably going to do this, though, when I think we're at Rodney Urban. We've missed him for a couple of episodes of joining us at the council meeting, which is very heavily anticipated by, you know, several people. So Rodney, glad you're with us tonight. Glad we're live on Channel 3.
You go, Rod.
It's your, it's your.
Professional voice. Professional voice. Yes.
Ralph's furniture.
Yes.
This is back to WVUC?
WVUC. That's right.
All right. WVUC?
WVUC. That's right.
All right. Now I'm turning off. All right.
Executive session.
Yes, we are going to executive session. I want to thank everybody for a good meeting tonight. We can, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad you liked the agenda. We're going to try to put this flow through to our other boards as well, just to try to clean up some things. So hopefully the meetings will go a little bit smoother in places. Thank you, Erica, for the presentation tonight. Thank you, Chief. So with that, yes, thank you, Rodney. Appreciate you being here. We did miss you while you were at the forest last time. So, but with that, I'd ask us to adjourn into an executive session at 8:28. The motion to enter into executive session. So thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.